Yeah.
You hear that?
Yep.
Okay then.
That's just one aspect though.
Huh?
That's just one aspect.
What do you mean?
Keeping it simple, it's true, it keeps it simple. We have five parcels on the street, we divide the assessment by five.
Yeah.
However.
It'll cost, I mean, they can give what, like six or seven examples where sometimes it'll cost residents more, sometimes it'll cost them less, and it's kind of arbitrary anyway.
Yeah, it'll always cost the city more. We will have to put more money into our projects.
Right. Yeah. Which I'm fine with. I mean, if, if we were currently in a system that was like facing streets every thirty years, I'd be like, oh, hold on, but like. If this is all gonna be gravel by the time. Yeah, anyways, so regardless of what we do, something easier than everybody, the worst of both worlds I have already. What do you think?
Kinda sorta.
Yeah, right.
I thought it would be.
I thought I had five minutes, my boy, I'm like, hey, this five minutes went by quick.
Yeah.
It's gonna be great.
Yeah.
I was a little disappointed though, you know those videos where those people shave their beards and then their kids look at them and they cry?
Yeah, yeah.
I had the video going, I did do that a lot, and she just didn't care.
Really?
Yeah.
Bringing that again, or what you're saying like?
Did not say anything about it, just went out, I did not look at it. Just ask for a banana.
Kids are dead to that way. For the winner, Katie's pro or?
No, she isn't. She, she is the least pro person that I've seen so far.
I've done.
It's just kind of ironic.
Okay, don't mind that clock that's behind me. Because it's wrong. But it is now six thirty, can you hear me okay? If I'm yelling into the mic, forgive me because I am having some hearing issues because of allergies. So I don't know how quiet or loud I'm talking and I definitely cannot hear the speakers out there. But either way, it is six thirty, it is February twenty first, twenty twenty-three. And at this time, I'd like to call to order the city council meeting. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and invocation will be given by Vice Mayor, First Ward Councilmember Arlene Robinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, at this time, I'm just gonna ask that, uh, we, uh, meditate, uh, worship in whatever way you see fit. And, uh, we'll close out with that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you will hit us with a roll call, please.
Mayor Daniel Mahoney.
Present.
Vice Mayor Arlene Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Freddie Dancy.
Each side.
Councilmember Ann Halida Gunn.
Present.
Councilmember Laura Dryer Schlecty.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Vanel.
Here.
Councilmember Will Forgrave.
Here.
All right, looks like we are all present and accounted for. Um, looking for a motion to support to adopt the agenda.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, deletions, or additions? Seeing or hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. There we go. Okay, and motion carries to adopt the agenda. Brings us down to item number five, presentations and proclamations. And I will hand it over to our clerk for polling locations.
Good evening, members of council. There was a request that was made to provide you all with possible locations of polling places that would result in each polling location being within the ward that it serves. Currently, the city utilizes four houses of worship, Saint John's Parish, First Presbyterian Church, Saint John's U C C, and Cascades Baptist Church, and two city-owned recreation centers, M L K and Booths. And I think the map is flawed. Yes. Currently, three of the six polling locations are not within the ward boundaries. Those locations are Saint John's Parish in Ward Three, First Presbyterian Church in Ward Four, and Saint John's U C C in Ward Five. So when looking at where we could potentially put polling locations to be within each ward boundary, in Ward Three, Northeast Elementary School, Ward Four, Greater Bible Way Church, and Ward Five, First Presbyterian Church, which is currently being used as Ward Four's polling location. And that's the next map. Thank you, Kelly. So those are circled on the map that's in front of you guys. We actually have not heard back from J P S on whether or not Northeast is a viable, um, location, but the other two would be. There were some things that we wanted to note when looking at this as a change. The practice of having polling places located outside the board boundary has been in place for over ten years. Michigan election law does not require polling locations being within the precinct boundaries, nor does the Jackson City Charter. Establishing this new standard that each polling place must be located within the boundaries of the ward would impact three thousand nine hundred and fifty registered voters in Ward Three, four thousand twenty-seven in Ward Four, and three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two voters in Ward Five. A grand total of eleven thousand nine hundred and nine voters, or forty-nine percent of the electors in the city. So if you all were to decide to move polling locations, there's a couple of things that we would have to do as the clerk's office, which would be to update Q V F. And we would be required to send out new voter I D cards to all affected electors, which would cost around seventy-five hundred dollars to do so. When we were looking at this in election commission to come up with a recommendation for you all, I just, I measured the distance between the potential polling location and the current polling location. In Ward Three, it's a one point eight mile difference. In Ward Four, one point six miles. Ward Five, one point two. Kelly, if you could pull up the next map. So when we really analyzed this, we took the furthest location in the ward to the current polling location, and then the furthest location from the new potential polling location. The difference was point three miles in Ward Three, point one miles in Ward Four, and point nine miles in Ward Five. When we discussed this as an election commission, because we felt like it would be helpful for you guys to have a recommendation from that body as well, we decided unanimously that the polling locations should stay where they are currently. Some of the factors that were cited was the cost of notification to voters, the limited distance between current polling location and proposed polling place, the timing of the change. The voters just got used to their new polling locations two cycles last year. For those who are affected by the ward boundary changes, to change it again, we thought might be a hardship to the voters. And then the standard being created is not a state law, is not a charter requirement, or a common practice in other cities with the ward system. And the next map is Bay City, Michigan, which utilizes a ward concept as well. There's nine wards, eight polling locations. As you can see in Ward Eight, there is not a polling location. The next map is for Midland, Michigan. Ward Three does not have a polling location. And as you can see, Ward Five has five polling locations. So after kind of having this conversation come up a couple of times and having the opportunity to discuss it with the election commission and what the recommendation was, our recommendation from the clerk's office is that a motion be made to keep the polling places where they currently are located and at the time of redistricting in twenty thirty-one, receive citizen input on the location of polling places for the ten-year period covered by any boundary changes that are to come. Then you'll guys will have an opportunity to get feedback from the public. Is having a polling location outside of the ward really a hardship for them? Or is this something that we're just kind of, you know, splitting hairs about? Are there any questions?
Councils, what questions do we have?
Is your recommendation we make a motion to not do anything? Why do we need to make a motion to do that?
I think what, if we had a motion and it was, you know, decided by the body, then it's kind of puts this issue to rest moving forward. And we would have a definitive time when we would revisit it.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, I didn't hear that part though. So you're saying we revisit this at a date to be determined?
Twenty thirty-one when we do redistricting, yeah. When this issue comes up again.
Okay.
Make a, you know, make it available to the public to provide input on that portion of it.
That is my only question.
I do have a quick question. So where was the, who initiated the original discussion on whether we should have polling in each respective ward?
Councilmember Schlecty asked the clerk's office to look into if it would be possible, what it would look like, and bring it back to council.
Got it, okay. So we're not hearing necessarily from voters that it's posing hardship or confusion. I know sometimes that happens when there's multiple wards in one polling location, confusion around where they should vote.
So what we got last year after redistricting, the majority of the complaints, and I don't want to say a hundred percent because I don't want to give an absolute number, but the vast majority was from Ward Two Precinct Three, which used to be a part of Ward Five and shifted to Two. Those residents voted at Saint John's U C C, and now they were being moved to Booth Center. And that's where a majority of the complaints that we got about the polling location changed for them.
So I'd kind of like to table this conversation until after, um, item number eleven. Hold on a second. I didn't think about it until we had the conversation.
You're thinking eleven eleven? Or ten, eleven point ten?
Eleven eleven. Because if, um, if we put out what eleven eleven is recommending, then it may be better to change the polling locations after this coming up election because there will be a lag time. But to wait ten years, I don't think, I've heard complaints from constituents in the fourth and the now fifth ward specifically. And I think when you look at where the polling location is for Two and the people who complained that went to Saint John's U C C, that's a lower income demographic and it's a bigger hardship for them to get to the polling locations. And I think it's, despite the fact it might cost us seventy-five hundred dollars, we ought to put the ability of our constituents to vote above anything else. So, um, I'd like to hold this conversation and see what happens at number eleven point eleven, if that's possible.
I mean, I think that would be up to the pleasure of the body. I don't know if that's a motion or just a recommendation. Um, I don't, I guess my, my question would be to the clerk is, uh, in, in, in your opinion, in opinion of the election committee, um, is that change going to make it easier for people to vote? Cause it didn't sound like there was much of a, a difference in distance, um, in the proposed changes.
So in our opinion, as election commission and as, um, the city clerk, I don't think that, that this particular change is gonna impact the voter. The precinct that Councilmember Schlecty mentioned would not be affected by this change whatsoever. They're into their polling location is in Ward Two. They would still be, Two, Three would still be voting at Booths. Who would change is for Three, Four, and Five. Three is located literally a block outside of the pole, of the ward. And it's been like that, like I said, for over the last ten years. I wasn't able to go back.
It's been like that since two thousand and one.
So it was, so that was, there was no change to that with the ward line changes?
No, it was no change to it being outside the ward boundaries.
And the reason Ward Three changed in two thousand and three had to do with nine eleven and the protection of schools and stuff, the security and, uh, concerns after the devastation of nine eleven.
So don't sound like the citizens that you have a concern for are impacted.
I'm sorry?
I said it doesn't sound like the citizens that you're saying that you're concerned about are impacted.
Five and Four are impacted by where the polls are, absolutely. Cause, um, Four, some of Four is already used to where they go to now. But the new part of Four used to go to Saint John's. Five, um, on all of them, half of them are used to going to one locate, to the location, and the other half are not, right? But it should be centered so that the, the, those that have more difficulty getting places, whether it's, uh, income, whether it's, um, accessibility issues, it doesn't matter. They should, they should be afforded a central location to where, in their ward. And, you know, I guess if, if you're talking about timing of changing it, this should have been looked at at the time the lines were changed. We changed the lines for twenty percent of the constituents. Then this should have been considered at the time of changing the lines, but that's old news at this moment in time.
Was there a significant decrease or drop in the amount of voter turnout due to any changes in our last election cycles?
So if I compare even year twenty twenty-two, um, to twenty eighteen, which is a, um, more accurate than comparing it to a presidential election, there was a slight decrease in the November election. It went from forty-three point seven-two percent turnout to thirty-six point seven-five. And in the primary, it went from, and that was twenty eighteen. So in twenty eighteen, it was twenty-one point one-two percent. And August, in twenty twenty-two, it was fifteen percent. But I think the thing to remember is the nature of how we conduct elections have evolved. We have no voter reason absentee voting. In the even years, we will have nine days of early voting where a elector can actually run their ballot through a tabulator instead of just mailing in their ballot, which odd-year elections won't kind of support. But to Councilmember Schlecty's point, the most impacted precinct in the city has the ability to vote absentee if they choose to. And even years, they'll have the ability to come to City Hall, which may be a little bit closer for them and vote in person nine days before the election. So it's more of a open process that they have options that doesn't necessarily require them to go to the polling location. And my concern is to have a standard that the polling location be center in the ward is adding a layer to redistricting that the city charter and state law don't require.
I wasn't suggesting it be centered, I was suggesting it be in the ward.
That's still staying.
I recognize.
Right, that's still not, it's not a standard that state or, um, city charter requires.
I'd like to table this, um, till we, till later date. I'd like to table this till we, till later date. An uncertain later date.
That's a, that's just a suggestion. So, I mean, I don't know if you just like making an open suggestion, you know, you got to make a motion that will have to be voted on.
I'd like to make a motion, we table this.
We never made a motion to open anything up, we're just talking about a presentation right now. I mean, you can bring something up whenever you'd like to, later in the meeting or at a later meeting date.
That's why you're the parliamentarian.
Am I right? Yeah, okay.
Is there a way to get input from constituents on this topic? Is there a question for me? I'm just asking a question, whoever.
Is there, I didn't, I couldn't, remember, I can't, I can't hear real well, you have to speak, speak real loud.
You know, you could, you could probably do something at your meetings and stuff, and, you know, over the next years, whatever.
What was your question?
My question was about getting input from constituents about changing polling locations, you know, whether or not that would make a difference for them. And it sounds like it used to be, it's actually going back to something that it used to be in the past, so, but I don't have any, I've not ever heard a complaint about people going to St. John's.
So again, is it, is it necessary for us to take any action on this, or is this just like a presentation? Are you asking us to take action on it? I think if we are being asked to take action, I think that we should decide whatever we go do now.
So the, to change polling locations is a very involved process. So to revisit this multiple times within that redistricting period, it kind of creates somewhat of a hardship depending on where it falls. Like right now, we have, we're finishing up, and it seems crazy, but we're still finishing up the process of notifying voters and cleaning up QBF. Because when we had to send out new voter ID cards, if we got them returned, there's a whole process that the state requires us to do. And it's multiple notification process. So we're in the middle of doing that. And we're in the middle of kind of getting prepared for May and trying to understand the changes to election law that occurred in November. So kind of doing this in the middle of that created some challenges. And it would be more convenient for us, but whatever you guys think is going to be best for the voters is absolutely what we will do. But from the standpoint of kind of having this hovering over, are we going to change the polling locations? The longer we let the electors get used to what they have and then change it, I think it's more detrimental to whatever benefit changing them would create, if that makes sense.
That does make sense.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we keep the locations as they are as recommended.
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, the clerk will tally and display the vote.
And the motion carries six yeses, one no, no being Laura Schlechtie. Right, that takes care of item number five. We have no public hearings today. Brings us down to item number six, citizens' comment.
Item number seven.
As usual, I will start us by reading the rules for speaking before city council. Number one, each speaker will state their name and address prior to addressing council. Number two, each speaker is limited to up to three minutes during the citizens' comment portion of the meeting. Council members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Number three, each speaker should be polite and courteous to the council and members of the public in attendance. While any speaker is free to express his or her opinion on any subject, no speaker may direct personal attacks at any member of the staff or council unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties, use obscene language while addressing the city council, or engage in disruptive or disorderly behavior during a council meeting. Number four, should any speaker cause a breach of the peace through their conduct, the mayor may declare the speaker out of order. Number five, if a speaker is declared out of order by the mayor and refuses to cease and desist from disruptive or disorderly conduct, the mayor may order the person removed from the meeting. Number six, each speaker may speak once under public comment and may not yield their time to others. Mr. John C. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John King, two zero three Third Street here in the city. I, Freddie Dancy had forced upon me some of this garlic butter, and, you know, normally, normally I can't be bribed, I would say, but when it's good food that's, you know, forced upon me, I couldn't resist. So, you know, I had to make spaghetti to go along with the garlic toast I made with it. So now I got the hard part all the way, out of the way, I'll get back to my normal issues. The maps, like, that you just talked about, I guess if you wouldn't have approved Connerwood's gerrymandering plan, you know, that could have taken care of, the problems wouldn't have been nearly as bad. I wanted to talk about Kelly Casimir and her no mow, mow May, when she spoke here, you know, she talked, she was an avid gardener and about late frost. But it was really an ignorant comment. I, I hope it was just ignorance. You know, it's one thing if it's May tenth and you have petunias out and you got to worry about a frost, but, but lawns aren't that way. May is the growing season, you know, it'll start in really late April, and, you know, she tried to suggest that's not the case. So May you will pretty much always have to mow at least four times, maybe five times. So, you know, that was falsehoods on her part. And speaking on her falsehoods, she spoke about the single holler a while back. She just suggested math is hard, and, you know, this coming from, I guess, like a chemistry professor, which was really odd, and she made apples to oranges comparisons. So hopefully you'll just dismiss everything she has to say, or even the environmental commission. There was, I, I seen a photo, it had the Goodyear blimp, and it said, "Don't shoot." And it was a joke in regards to the sad state of our military right now, that, you know, the, the shooting in East Lansing, they want to pass new laws, but with Carol Simon, the prosecutor at the time, she could have done something about it. So the, the issue isn't we need new laws. Homelessness, there was no public information, you know, that on tonight's agenda for the public, so there's no transparency. And Mr. Mayor, you mentioned you don't always, that you don't agree with Keisha Hamilton one hundred percent. So maybe if you could, in your comments, let us know where you don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bor, uh, sorry, Mr. John C. King. Peter Bormuth.
Peter Bormuth, one forty-two West Pearl Street. First, I want to touch on comments made at the last meeting. There was a man who got up and suggested that we have a overhead passage from the Hayes Hotel into the library, historic library building, that we have a, you know, a greenhouse and a patio down below. You know, just looking at that, that's about five million extra dollars thrown in the Hayes Hotel plan. And I've seen a Hayes Hotel plan not happen because of a mere two million dollars before. So I hope people are actually considering that nonsense. Secondly, I want to ask the city attorney, Matthew Haggerty. I had mentioned previously that I didn't think that the city of Jackson could act as a fiduciary for residents in action, and I wanted to know what information you actually found out about that. I hope you looked that up, but I haven't heard from you. Then I want to talk about eleven-three, the parks mowing and irrigation contract. Freddie, you're my, you're my councilperson, I want to make sure that you find out that there is not going to be any herbicide used in the cemeteries, desecrating the graves of our ancestors. And finally, I want to mention the idea of a transition to an even-year election. I am in support of this simply because of the additional number of people we would get out to participate in the election. And I think the more community participation we have in elections, the better representation that we will get in the people who are elected to public office. Thank you for your time.
Jane Higby.
She stepped to the bathroom.
Okay, I'll go back to her. Roger Mofort.
My name is Roger Mofort, reside at fifty-six ninety-six Shady Oak Lane, Jackson. I want to thank council for having this open forum for us to be able to speak. I think you've heard me before, I'm talking about ethnogenics again. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update as to what is going on in the city of Jackson for that. I attended a meeting last night, it's a fundraiser and an information gathering. They found that it will only take about three hundred and eighty-three signatures to petition the council and moving forward. And the goal is to have that to you in August, which will put us within the ninety-day limit of the November election. So it's moving forward. I'm hoping that the city would take a look at Ann Arbor's ordinance that they passed unanimously. All of the cities and townships that have passed ethnogenics of decriminalization in Michigan have all passed by the councils unanimously. It's a good, well-thought-out education. There was a ton of references in both the council's ordinance as well as in the prosecuting attorney's decision to not prosecute within the county of Washtenaw. And so I'm hoping that you'll take the time to look at those, consider it for Jackson, be a leader within the state and not just a follower across. It's happening everywhere, it's in the news. One of my concerns is in education and people who are, they're hearing it and seeing it on the news and wanting to possibly try them for microdosing, for PTSD, depression, a whole host of things. And my concern is one of the drugs that they talk about on there is MDMA. MDMA is, used to be called ecstasy, well, it still is, and if it's pure, purest form, but you don't know when you go to the street what you're getting. Most of it is now considered to be Molly. Molly is cut primarily with methamphetamine and opioids, which would be heroin and/or fentanyl, which puts people at risk if they don't have the comfort to be able to go and seek information from reliable sources and puts them at risk. So please consider those ordinances. You can find them online. For Ann Arbor, I think it's absolutely the best one that's out there, and considering adopting it for Jackson. And then hopefully our prosecutor would roll it out as a neighbor to Washtenaw County as well. Thank you.
My name is Kate Brown, my address is sixteen twenty East Michigan Avenue. I am here today asking the city council to adopt a resolution decriminalizing entheogenic plants in medicine. I started getting headaches in my early teens. By the time I was in college, I was diagnosed with cluster headaches. Those are also called suicide headaches because of the, I think it's like twenty times more likely that people that suffer from them are to commit suicide because of how seriously life-impacting they are. I was prescribed an off-label gout medicine to treat my headaches. I dealt with that until, well, I graduated from college, got a job working for the state, and I had read about how you could go to Canada and get psilocybin mushroom therapy for the specific types of headaches that I had. I didn't dare discuss that with anybody that I worked with at the time for fear of losing my job or having it negatively impact me. I left the state in two thousand and sixteen and was gifted a small, like an eighth gram or an eighth of a mushroom chocolate. I had a lovely evening in my house. About two months later, I realized that I hadn't had a headache since I had eaten mushrooms. I then went on a little journey of trying to track down the people that made them or trying to access them safely, which resulted in me having to drive to Detroit every couple of months to be able to get mushrooms safely. I've since figured out how to cultivate them myself to have them more easily accessible. But the impact that not, or being able to have them has had in my life is astonishing and life-changing, and the more I go talk about them, the more you meet people that have also had life-changing impacts from a plant. Every single day, there are new articles in the Washington Post and the New York Times and literally every single piece of media we consume about the benefits of them. It is not a matter of if mushrooms are going to be prevalent in our community, they already are, it's a matter of when they will be and how we act towards them and how we treat them and how we allow people to use them. There's incredible information about how they're helpful in healing from alcoholism, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, headaches, tinnitus, any number of things that you can think of, there's plants that can be used to help those. We're asking that you adopt, like Roger just said, a resolution similar to Ann Arbor's or Detroit or Hazel Park, I believe is the other one that has a nice one. And if we don't have the support of the city council to adopt a resolution, we do have support of the Michigan Initiative for Community Healing, the Michigan Psychedelic Society, a number of other decrim nature groups that have already had success in getting valid initiatives throughout the state and other places. And we would like to ask that you allow us to move forward with this in a way that's safe and helpful for the community. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jane Higby, and I live at the Travel Lodge Motel on Rose Hill Road in Jackson. Thank you for letting me speak today. I feel honored to be able to speak before you. I grew up in this area and in fact was the first female water meter reader for the city of Jackson. I've worked all my life, I've worked three jobs from the age of sixteen. My first job was at Jay's Bookstore, if that dates me. And I've participated in many groups to help others. I'm sixty-eight years old now, and a year ago, I was renting a house and farm, and I suffered a massive stroke and two brain surgeries. The doctor said I would not live, and if I did, I would be a vegetable. I explain this because I have a speech impediment from the stroke, so I hope you can understand me, and I apologize if you can, I'll do my best. I was taking care of the farm by myself and five horses when I had my stroke. My family abandoned me because I was disabled and now homeless and felt I was a burden. In the past year, I lost my health, my hard horse, my home and lifestyle, my sister and my beloved dog, and all of my belongings. So I've literally lost everything. I'm here today speaking on behalf of several people who are homeless and live at the Travel Lodge at Elm and I ninety-four. We all agree, we are grateful to the city of Jackson for four- for forming a group to help us, namely, uh, Residents in Action. And we feel it's important for you to know that your grant money is not being spent as we think you intended. Only one person shows up. Her name is Davida and we wonder why there aren't more people showing up to help her. Because, um, she brings the food in and then she's not able to stay and supervise it. And unfortunately, there are some people that will come and they'll just take massive amounts of food, leaving, you know, some people without anything. Um, the hot food is often cold or not cooked at all. We've had bologna or deli sandwiches as our wholesome meal. And I have to tell you, I have eaten more cheap hot dogs in the past three weeks than in the past three years of my life. And once, they weren't even cooked. I understand you have granted two hundred thousand for personnel. So why is only one person getting, doing anything?
Thank you, Ms. Higby.
Is that me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, my main point was that the food is not healthy. And, um, I talked too much about my stroke, so I didn't get to talk about that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for your comment today. Jacob in Ossencio.
Good evening, council. Jacob in Ossencio, two fifteen North Higbee. I'm here to give a unsolicited but brief update on some stuff we've been doing at the Environmental Commission. Uh, you all moved to pass NOMO May two weeks ago and we appreciate that. It did bring to light that there were a couple of gaps in some of our thinking about that. So I had a great opportunity to visit with DPW and talk about some of the creative ways that we can, uh, work around, um, some of the potential issues of NOMO May. So we're going to make an effort to work with Arrendemic and other relevant city staffers to make sure that our messaging around NOMO May makes sense. Our messaging is clear to people and it does not serve as an undue burden for, uh, for DPW and all that they do. Um, I'd also like to briefly take this opportunity to, um, encourage the passage of the RFP. I also had a great opportunity because of that visit to DPW to visit the water treatment plant. And I will say, if you have not had an opportunity to be there recently, definitely reach out to Mike and make an opportunity to go. Uh, they're doing amazing work, as you know. But I think, um, even myself, as somebody who studied water and studied environmental science in college, uh, we don't realize the magnitude of the work that goes into managing the plant, um, how much they accomplish with how little they have in terms of robust staffing and opportunities. Um, but I really think city staff should be commended for that and should continue to get as many resources as we can afford them for the improvement of the plant, the improvement of the water system and the continued training. Um, lastly, I will say that, um, NOMO May actually is really important. Um, it's good for pollinators and, uh, May twentieth is our freeze date in Jackson. I always tell people, I don't know a lot about agriculture, just a little bit. I'm more of a forestry guy myself, but May twentieth is our freeze date. And a freeze date means, excuse me, freeze date means fifty percent chance that we're going to drop below thirty-two. It is much lower that we're gonna drop below twenty-eight degrees and actually kill the grass in a hard freeze. But we, we are at a fifty percent chance in the third week of May to, um, to plant things. And if you ask any gardener, they probably will not plant until Memorial Day. Just my two cents unprofessionally. Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes our citizen comments. Uh, brings us down to item number eight. Petitions and communication from city staff and other governmental entities to be accepted and placed on file, looking for a motion and support to accept and place on file to twenty-twenty-two Jackson Annual Report.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing, none, the clerk retaliating, display the vote. All right, motion carries, brings us down to eight point two. Looking for a motion and support to accept and place on file to CDBG Home and CV Financial Summaries for January twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing, none, the clerk retaliating, display the vote. And motion carries unanimously. Brings us down to consent calendar, looking for a motion and support on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, but remove nine point four for separate consideration.
It's been moved. Uh, so we are voting on consent calendar, all except for item nine point four will be considered separately. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing, none, the clerk retaliating, display the vote. And motion carries unanimously. Brings us back around to item nine point four, looking for a motion and support on nine point four engineering request for public hearing for a presentation for a Lansing Avenue Corridor Improvements Project.
Can I make that motion?
It's been moved and supported. Let's open up for discussion.
Um, I just would like to get the timeline on projects. And I know you've said it three billion times over my tenure, uh, but let's, if we could do it one more time or at least get it in writing so that we can hand it to our constituents so that they understand what this, what it means. Cause I had a neighborhood, neighborhood meeting about this and it was, uh, it was very engaging. And I, Freddie was there. Um, and I liked that conversation, but I think also helping people understand, um, the public hearing and then what's next and then, and what options they have. Even if we had a pamphlet that said that, that would be really nice. Cause I don't know how many times we've all asked John the same question.
John, do you want to go ahead and explain how our construction projects work?
Or it, I mean, I don't, I don't even think we need to explain. I think the request is for something in writing.
Yeah, I think that would be really nice that we could just, either as council, we can always refer back to it.
It could be a lot smaller than pamphlet. Maybe we'll have a sheet of paper, but we'll get you something.
That would be awesome. Okay, thank you. It's a very interesting project and it was a very interesting conversation, so.
Any other discussion on the item?
Mr. Mayor, um,
Yes, sir.
It's not so much the item. You probably gonna say, well, you can't talk about it. Can I talk about it?
Talk about it.
Oh, so my thing is, um, I wanna find a way to have a discussion about the, uh, uh, special assessment policy. Uh, I know it's been tabled for a while and regardless about this item, but all items that deal with special assessments, I just think, uh, would like to see us have a conversation, discussion, you know, vote up or down, whatever. But I just think, uh, having that conversation out loud and, uh, you know, uh, talk about it, pros and cons and what we like, what we don't like and things like that. I'd just like to see the special assessment policy brought back. I don't know if I can, should make some, I just, that's just me. Hopefully somebody say, yeah, Freda, let's do that.
I think Jason has a new policy he's gonna be presenting to us.
But that's the policy I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think he's making a change. He's recommending a change.
It was actually presented once and this body took no action.
But I thought he was bringing it back. I heard he was bringing it back up or something.
Uh, I sent it, we sent it all on to, for review, um, just because Freddie asked about it and I had thoughts about having it on the agenda, but this council took no action, so I didn't see it right for me to put it on the agenda.
I see, okay.
I think we can, we can vote for the motion on the floor and then hypothetically, if somebody wants to make another motion about something completely different, they could do that.
I, I would agree with that, or if we would just wanna direct that to be an item on the, uh, on the agenda for discussion. Um, we can just take the action and then maybe at some point before end of meeting, just make that recommendation that that be brought, uh, forth for reconsideration by the body.
Yes, sir. Honorable.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion on nine point four? Seeing or hearing, none, clerk retaliating, display the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Brings us down to other business, item ten point one, City Homeless Efforts, Winner Sheltering of the Unhoused. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I don't really have any report. We, um, at six fifteen tonight, got the latest report from our contractor Residents in Action. As we were sitting here, uh, during the meeting, I have to pass it along to you, but, uh, I have nothing to report. I don't know that our contractor does. I think things are going well. We heard about an issue tonight and I noticed that our contractor, Ria, went over and talked to that person. So I feel like we're pretty balanced.
So we do have a report somewhere?
You just were emailed.
Oh, okay. Um, I do have a question. Who is acting as the fiduciary? Cause I, I thought I heard that we were going on, then we didn't, and then it went to CAA and then it went to Family Services.
And Children's Aid.
So did it start with us and we couldn't be fiduciary?
We, I don't remember, we, it was always, there was always a third party involved. So we thought we could and then, um, thought it best to work with a different provider in CAA that was for the first batch of money. Now for the balance of it has been Family Services and Children's Aid. But fiduci, so yes, they're holding the money, but the oversight is always with the city.
So we have somebody, is it Corey overseeing all the money spent on or?
Well, yeah, like every, that's why you get the reports, you all are.
Right, well, right, right, but I meant more detailed, closer look.
Yes.
Like day-to-day. Right. Um, and is there a reason you switched from Community Action Agency to Family Services?
Uh, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason, but it was just based on the, the relationship. You can ask, you can ask Ria to explain that if they want to, but.
Is there a reason you switched from?
So at the time, um, Brenda Pilgrim was one of the staff with Community Action Agency who has helped us in the past and she took a position with Su Shink. And so CAA was kind of stretched, um, for, um, the person.
Staff, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the most recent, um, update be included on the agenda on the city's website.
Oh, well, that goes without saying.
Oh, it goes without saying, okay. I'll resend it then.
Anything else? Um, just, uh, just because I, I think last week, we kind of talked about this potential cliff. I think we talked about a lot, the additional, close to two hundred people, if not over two hundred people that are on the, the waiting list. Um, Tasha, do you wanna just like talk briefly about the, um, idea that you shared with me? I think would be a good thing to share with council as well as the public.
Absolutely. Can I speak on the food budget as well? So when you, when you look at the documentation, you'll see that we've not really tapped into the food budget at all. And at the last meet, it may be around three thousand dollars, um, since onset of this. And we had originally, um, put aside, uh, forty thousand dollars. At the last meeting, um, we talked about reallocating, um, the food dollars to, um, so that we would have more hotel stay. So that's the, pretty much, uh, the food budget that we've had is, has been either donations from, um, various businesses or us trying to minimize the cost, um, so that we could allocate the dollars to more hotel. So you'll see that in what we've spent to date on the budget, um, for food. And then, what was the other question? Oh, the cliff. Oh, well, so we can minimize a li- a, a little bit of the cliff of it to give people longer stay by reallocating some of those funds. And then, um, right now, there's sixty-two individuals that are currently placed in hotels. Um, I think it's about thirty-seven families between the two hotels. And, um, we have, I wanna say a hundred and eighty-nine, um, people who are just sitting on my Excel sheet that have self-disclosed that they are, uh, homeless, um, primarily street homeless or, um, car homeless. And so, um, it's bothering me that they're just sitting in an Excel and, and, and we don't have the, the resources to help them. So we would like to, or we're planning to have something like a job fair, but it will be a housing or homeless support fair. Um, and we've, um, made outreach to multiple organizations, agencies, businesses, um, whoever. Um, and we want people to think outside of the box, like, um, maybe apartment complexes, um, Michigan Works or, um, businesses who are looking for employment or, or job agencies. Um, anybody who thinks that they have a resource that can help this population if you will show up to that, um, that event. And we're gonna personally, uh, make outreach to everyone who is on the list, um, to invite them to that event, um, so that we can connect them to resources.
Do you happen to have a date yet?
Not yet. So that's gonna be dependent on, so we want the Secretary of State Mobile Unit to come to help, um, with the IDs and whatnot. So it depends on what their options are for the dates and then also the venue.
So it's a resource fair or a job fair?
I, it, well, I would say a resource fair for the, the homeless population or those who are struggling with housing issues.
Thank you.
I just, I have a quick question about the reallocation of, of the food budget. You said you'd originally budgeted forty thousand. Would that require a motion from us to reallocate that, um, or allow them to reallocate that after the motion we made a couple of months ago? Cause I would be in favor of doing that or how would we go about doing that?
Discuss that the last.
We did, okay. Got baby brains, sorry.
That's okay. I, that's, that's a real thing.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't, I don't think we needed a motion to make sure that they can do what they can, need to do. Okay, I think that answers all the questions. Thank you for that update.
Okay, thank you.
Good, it brings us down to new business, item eleven point one. Uh, looking for a motion and support on the corrective resolution packet, row five thousand.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing, none, the clerk retaliating, display the vote. And motion carries unanimously, brings us down to eleven point two, looking for a motion and support.
So moved, support.
Bloomis Park Phase Two Change Order has been moved and supported.
Out support.
I was gonna say, wait a minute, my hearing is messed up. I was gonna say, did Freddie just move and support that?
It's an echo, there's an echo in the chambers.
Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Dancy, supported by. Uh, it's been moved by Mr. Dancy, supported by Vice Mayor. Um, any questions on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote.
My voting option's not coming up. Am I the only one?
Click, click, show voting.
Yeah, I've done that, maybe it won't work now.
Do refresh.
I did that last time.
Okay, so give it a minute, cause it's, there's been a lag. Mine's been acting up too.
Okay, there we go.
If I had a mouse, it'd be easier.
Brings us down to eleven point three, looking for a motion to support on the Parks, Moines and Irrigation Contract for twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
So I guess my understanding is that this is the last year, then it goes out.
That's correct. This is the last year of the renewal, then we'll be rebidding the project.
Then you're going to be doing what?
Next year, this goes out to bid again. This is the last of the one year renewals we have.
And then just, um, just for, uh, clarification for one of the questions that we got during our, uh, public comment on the use of herbicides in this contract, same as last year, right? No herbicides, so, okay. All right, any other questions?
So that means no, uh, all organic?
Yes, and an organic, non, I don't know what the word to describe it is. Basically soap is sprayed on plants.
No pesticides.
So no change in what we do?
No change, no, no change. And we are very sensitive to people who call and suggest other alternatives and who always have interesting suggestions for us on ways we can improve our practices.
Seeing or hearing none of the comments or questions, clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimously, brings us down to item eleven point four. Looking for a motion to support on the, uh, to identify community development block grant and home investment partnerships project for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and establish primary funding allocations for those projects.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
Yeah, I have some questions. So why is there a three percent, uh, in anticip- less three percent in anticipation of the reduction of funds?
The federal government has decided to give us less.
For no reason, just?
For their own reasons.
Okay. Um, and then looking at rehabilitation and then rehabilitation administration. Administration has thirty-eight percent of those two numbers added together. Does that seem realistic?
Yes.
Cause I'd like to see more money go towards re- rehabilitation. Same thing with the streetscape, but one seventy-five, do we have a number of how many anticipated lots you think you're going to sell in the next year so that we, the one seventy-five would be utilized for sidewalks, reconstruction, curb cuts, and planting of trees?
How many?
It says improving the marketability of city-owned vacant lots can create better building opportunities for developers.
Oh, yeah, I expect we'll sell, I mean, at least twenty, and goals of at least a hundred lots, so.
In a year?
Yeah.
And then, um, under the, uh, the Chodo Reserve, it says these funds would be held in reserve for possible future projects. Can you give me an example of what a future project is?
So this would be something like the partnership with Habitat for Humanity, where we're building homes, things like that.
I just have a little bit of a concern with the amount of the administration costs. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand plus the thirty-sixth five seems a little excessive.
If I recall correctly, I don't look for Shane to not have said, but that is in line with future years and something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we use all of that typically? Well, hi Derek. Oh, there you go, okay.
Yeah, come on.
Good evening, council. What is your question again?
Uh, do we usually use all of the administrative costs, and if we don't, does it get reallocated to somewhere else? Sounds like it's quite an effort to, to change this once it's in place.
If we don't use it, it rolls over to next year and we have to reallocate. And you, I think you mentioned three hundred and fifty thousand in admin.
Roughly.
Okay.
Three sixty-one, five.
The, the, the one fifty at the, the top of the discussion issue, that's for the overall administration. The other one fifty is not for in-house, that is for things like architectural engineering, appraisal, professional services, and so on. Any other questions?
Do we need that type of money for, for rehabs? So like, do they do appraisals and do they do an architectural drawings on a rehab of twenty-five thousand or less?
It just depends on what the project is. So if we, something like the Boost Center, we will blow through that quick.
But this was for loans set at twenty-five thousand, with the minimum loan set at twenty-five thousand. So I just wouldn't think that most of this stuff would apply, so.
You're right, most of it wouldn't, but the rehabilitation administration that you're asking about is, to Shane's point, it gets, drew sucked up.
By bigger projects?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for the explanation.
Probably can title that a little differently next time.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
I'm just curious, Derek must've gotten here late, cause he didn't come up to public comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, seeing or hearing none of the questions, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimously, brings us to eleven point five. Looking for a motion to support for the approval of the sale of city-owned property located at ten thirteen Second Court for ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
Will this be personal property, like the individual is going to use this property?
Owner occupied.
Hold on, which one are we on?
Second court.
Second court.
And I'm sorry, the question?
Owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
You know, we don't have a sense of that on this one. Other ones, they had, do indicate, hey, we want to, uh, you know, buy this and fix it up to live in here. And I don't think we, they let us know on this one, so I can't answer that.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimously, brings us down to ten point six, looking for a motion to support for the water treatment plant engineering study.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to the tune of a hundred and thirteen dollars, a hundred and thirteen thousand, excuse me. That would be a discount. Um, any discussion on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Motion passes unanimously, brings us down to item ten, excuse me, eleven point seven. Looking for a motion to support to, uh, purchase a F-two-fifty valve truck for Public Works.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on the item?
What is this, what do we use this truck for, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we use this truck to open and close water main valves. When they are stuck or they're really hard, uh, more than a two-person crew can use a it's basically, it looks like a T. It's a wrench that goes down into a manhole and goes onto a, a nut. They cannot twist it on their own. They use this valve truck to get on, on it with that tool. And it has hundreds of pounds of force and sometimes even, I don't know, I don't remember the highest number I've heard, but it's been over a thousand pounds of force to move a, a stuck valve.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's, it's important.
It's not juniors, is it?
It's not juniors.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion on the item? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. Passes unanimously, brings us down to eleven point eight. Looking for a motion in support, uh, for the Myrtle and wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Support.
It's been moved and supported.
Well, I think since this is such a big ticket item, can someone tell us what's going on?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Mike Osborne come up and explain to it. There's two different things happening here.
Good evening, um, well, this started way back during our Saw Grant project. We had discovered many deficiencies at the wastewater plant, the collection system, and the Myrtle Lift Station. Now, the Myrtle Lift Station, like, I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of our sewage flow from the city goes through Myrtle. So when you read through this agenda item, I mean, you couldn't possibly know that. When we talk about pumps, there's some, most of them are as big as this podium, even taller. And the reason why it's so much is when we first started, it's like, you know, I mean, John could tell us all the history, I'm sure, but this plant is old, so it's like working on an old house. You start, you start digging into things, you find more and more problems, more and more concerns. And I know it's a lot of money. Originally, we thought we could pay for it all with our, you know, ARPA funds. But we started finding more problems as we worked with the engineers. And that coupled with the fact that, in my field, the prices are going through the roof on everything. So then I worked with Chandra to try to figure out how we could afford to, still afford to do it, even though the prices were going up, and so we're paying for it, uh, as you can see, partially out of ARPA and partially with the sewer funds. You know, these are, you know, and some, some of this stuff is at the plant. There's pumps, there's return activated sludge pumps, there's pumps that pump flow from the clar- the bottom of the clarifiers to the air, to the, to the aerators. I mean, there's, you know, cleaning the clarifiers to the, well, well, I mean, we, we have all of these pumps, all of these processes pumping stuff all over, and they're old. I mean, you know, all of, as you can, I'm sure you've all read this, I mean, it, everything's passed its expected life. So if you've ever been to the wastewater plant, I think you could look at it for a few minutes and understand what we're talking about. It needs help.
Thanks, Mike. And I think we'll do a tour of the wastewater plant for everyone on council. We'll pick a nice hot day in July or August to go out there.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I mean, was this, is this part of budgeted sewer funds?
Yes.
It is, and?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say it's nice to see us, um, you know, even though we're late to the party, doing something with this. Some of the stuff hasn't been touched since it was installed during the Nixon administration. Um, you know, we take this, these things for granted. We have for the last generation. And, you know, when people flush their toilet or turn on their faucet, they expect that to work, and we need to make sure that it does. We can't take it for granted anymore, and maybe it is, uh, seven and a half million dollars, but it's incredibly well-spent, um, for something as, as vital as, you know, clean water for a resident.
I would agree with that. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote. The item passes unanimously. Um, brings us down to eleven point nine. Which I will, is a consideration of TA Wilson, purchase of TA Wilson, uh, from Jackson Public Schools, which I will pass to city manager.
Yeah, um, while coordinating all this, um, we think that, we thought the timing would be right for this meeting, but I'd like to see you guys table this till our next meeting. I just want to make sure that the public school board is, gets their part done first. Freddie asked about this earlier, and, and I said, I think everybody's on the same page for tonight, and it turns out we weren't quite, so. So when the mole showed up, I asked him what, what went down, and he said they didn't do it, so I think we should wait.
They make a motion to table, postpone this until the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing or hearing none, clerk will tally and display the vote.
I will always listen to you, Freddie.
Cat's out of the bag now.
Reliable sources say you make good butter, so I should probably.
I know, John King didn't say whether he liked the butter. He just said he had to make more spaghetti and stuff.
Passes unanimously. Sounded like he liked the butter to me.
I know, well, I, I would have assumed that. I'm just pointing that detail out.
Brings us down to eleven point ten, looking for a motion to support on Ward Two Polling Place relocation for the twenty twenty-three election cycle.
Support.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, polling place for the twenty twenty-three election cycle by moving precinct three to St. John's UCC and precinct four and five to St. John's Parish. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion?
I have a concern maybe. Um, when I voted at St. John's UCC, it was a huge waiting line for, not the precinct I'm in, but the other precinct. I'm not used to the which is which, so. And it seemed really tight in there. Now, that wasn't even your election, so that may not happen, cause it's an odd year election, but I would just point that out, that it was that one precinct was, they were, I felt bad for them. I didn't know how long that was taking them to vote. And it doesn't seem like there'd be a lot of room to add a precinct into where their space is, so. Just throwing it out there.
Um, I'm just gonna chime in, cause that's where I always vote. I don't know, depending on what time of day you went, I mean, obviously, you're probably in a diff- I don't know if you're in a different precinct than me, I can't keep up. But I went right before work, and I didn't have to wait in line at all. And there were like five people in the entire building that were voters when I got there. So I think it might just depend on when you go.
I think waiting in line for any amount of time for us in Jackson is a, a little unusual.
Oh, no, this was, they were racked and Oh, no, this was, they were racked and stacked. You can ask your people who run that polls. They were sitting and waiting. I got right through mine, but, um, I must be five-ten, maybe? I think I'm five-ten, but five-eleven, there was, I'm just pointing it out, so, so that you're prepared for it. And I know it's dark, but that's November, so it's dark anyways.
Okay, any other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing and hearing none, the clerk will tally and display the vote. Okay, motion carries unanimously, bringing us down to eleven eleven. Looking for a motion in support to transition to even-year citywide elections.
Support.
Support.
It's been supported and supported. One of those will consider the, the motion.
Okay, move.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to be clear, this is to establish a date to hold a public hearing to talk about it some more before we decide to do it or not.
That date being March seventh.
perk up over there, that's all.
Nate would have had us on the front page of the, of the paper. Okay. Sounds like no other discussion. Clerk will tally and display the vote. And motion carries unanimously, brings us down to item eleven twelve. Looking for a motion in support to amend, uh, for amendment two to the twenty twenty water main engineering contract.
So moved, support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion on the motion, the clerk will tally and display the vote.
My finger's starting to hurt trying to get it to shut off.
Okay, and motion carries unanimously, brings us down to eleven thirteen. Looking for a motion in support to request to adopt a resolution to apply for a raise twenty twenty-three discretionary grant.
So moved, support. Yeah, this is specifically for the Martin Luther King Drive, Junior Drive.
Was that, sorry, was that supported and moved already?
Yes.
Okay, supported and moved. Lord, you had a question?
Specifically for Martin Luther King Drive, South Street to Morrell, right? So I guess my question would be, why that street? Is there a specific rationale behind the grant?
Yeah, the rationale was, is really twofold. One, we have the Martin Luther King Quarter Improvement Authority getting off the ground and the city beginning to focus on that area with deliberate and targeted effort. And then two was the nature of the grant and the way you score points lent itself to that geographic area with the priorities from the federal level. So it fit. We applied for this last year. Um, it was a last, uh, I would say, um, last minute effort to get the grant in. And, uh, we, we, we did pretty well, um, all things considered, the, in the, just the weeks we had to put it together. And then we, we had a meeting with the, um, an after-action meeting with the grant maker. I can't remember if this is the EPA or D O T. And the, oh, well, even, even better, the Federal Highway Administration. Showed us where we lacked in our scoring, and so we think we've made some pretty good improvements. So if everything was equal as last year, we, we have a, stand a pretty good chance to make it at least past the first cut on this, this go-around. So those are the reasons why.
So you applied last year for what?
Same thing, M L K C I A.
And they turned you down?
They turned us down. Then we had, like I said, we had a meeting about our grant application. They showed us where we were a little deficient. We made those changes and corrections and want to take another run at it.
So just so you know, my constituents in the fourth ward are very frustrated. They feel the fourth ward is being ignored. That was loud and clear, so. If you can come up with some projects and grant money, that would be nice.
Yeah, we did West Michigan.
Ignored in, in what ways?
They, they just, they, they feel like all the money's going to the south side of the, the city.
Where there's been no money for.
Well, no, I mean, when I first got on council, the tax dollars were low, and all we had was C B D G money. And a lot of the C B D G money went to the south side. So I just wrote a note to ask for some specific.
Went to the south side, like, to tear homes down?
Uh, no, went to, I'm talking about roads. They, that's when we had money to do roads. It was C B D G money, so. I'm just letting you know how my constituents feel.
I would want to see what you were talking about, um.
We were talking about the land.
Especially in comparison.
No, I didn't compare anything. I'm just letting you know what my constituents say. They have a right to their opinion.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm just asking you because you were on council during that time for clarification on what you're stating. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, so if I remember correctly, there was a lot of, because we didn't have tax dollars. We lost a lot in taxable value. And the city had to rely on C B D G funds, and obviously, that can only be used in certain areas. And so we, we did improvement back there. Um, and it would, you know, I just wrote a note to ask if we get a map of when projects have done, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory. I mean, I, there's a lot of areas in the city that have been ignored, not just the south side. And I think it's great, that especially if there's grant money to do, uh, M L K. But when I drive down M L K, it's not as bad as Wisner Street or several other streets in the community. And we're the ones who have to answer the questions to our constituents who say, how come the money went there? So I have every right to ask the question and voice my concern for my constituents.
You have every right to ask those questions. I was just simply asking for clarification on the statement that, um,
When we were first.
Back in the day that more dollars were going to the south side. I just want a clarification on what that, what that opinion came from.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, personally, the way I look at this is, um, the same investment that the city of Jackson had to make in, uh, public dollars in our downtown, which I'm sure many parts of the community felt like many dollars have already been invested in the downtown. In order for the complete renovation and rebuilding of our downtown, it took a certain amount of intentional reinvestment of our public dollars in the downtown. Like, a lot of people felt like, man, they just redid all of downtown Michigan Ave. Why are they digging it all up and redoing it again? Uh, but look at the private investment that followed that.
I, I don't disagree with the improvements.
That's kind of the, the same idea here.
Right.
It's the same idea here. And plus, like city manager said, for this particular grant, uh, because of the way the scoring lined up, it was the best option to apply for. But, okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, um, to speak on that, so, you know, when I tell the people in the second ward when I have meetings, um, when, when, you know, one thing I like, I didn't grow up in, in Jackson, I'm not originally from here. But one thing I like about the south side is that people get out, they use their voice. They use their voice, they, they've been using their voice from Francis M A K for decades. Change do come and happen, but when the people get out and use their voice, uh, things start happening. And I tell the people, tell the second ward, you know, yeah, I, I, I talk a lot, I talk so much behind closed doors about second ward and things like that. And I love these sides, and I talk about it a lot. But I say, you know, if you really want to help make that change, you have to come to the council meeting and talk about something. If it's, uh, Page Avenue, if it's a street you're concerned about, you know, you just have to come out and voice your opinion. You know, you want a story, you just have to come out, um, you know, it's not like we don't fight for it, but you just have to come out and voice your opinion. That, that's, that's how I feel about it. So, um, I understand, you know, every, every, every ward needs something for the most part. But, uh, you, you just, man. My hat's off to the people in the second, in the, in the first ward and south side, because they've been voicing their opinion ever since this, you know, almost eight years been on this council, and they've been voicing their opinion for a long, long time. You know, I know we can fight for our wars and fight for dollars and cents. You know, it's not a lot to go around. But, uh, I think when the people get out and use their voice and come to council meeting and really, you know, express themselves and what they feel about, what they think about, uh, I, I believe that goes a long way. So that's just, uh, what I want to say about that. But, man, south side's been misused since, oh, God, decades, so, thank you.
All I can say is, I agree. I loved it. So, um, it, it's time, and, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of it. And I know there has been projects that happened, and then they end up, as the mayor said, being redone again. But honestly, M L K Drive still has some issues even when it was last redone. Morrell, not Morrell, um, M L K and Hyde Street. I just think there's some unevenness, so that I always have a problem driving that way. But, yeah, it's, it's, it's time.
I had one question. Are they projecting a road diet on that road at all?
In simple terms, yes. I mean, you can think about what we did here in downtown, um, to make it more pedestrian-friendly. And so it's kind of along the, the similar type of vein to promote the growth there and to promote all modes of traffic and the, have, have just the right amount of driveling and asphalt that we need. You know, to have a, to move people, but also make it aesthetically pleasing.
And a multimodal pathway, I trust, will be involved, hopefully?
I mean, there'll be sidewalks.
Path on the west side.
The path on the west side.
Okay, good.
Um, so my last comment, and then I'll call for the vote if there's no other comments after this. I just, uh, a, a, a super, super important thought just popped up in my mind. For forty-nine years, Jackson's south side and most of the black citizens in the city of Jackson fought for a street to be renamed in the city of Jackson after Martin Luther King. And in two thousand and nine, immediately when I moved back, one of the biggest things that bothered me is only during the month of February, the city of Jackson would put up signs on Francis Street temporarily for twenty-eight days renaming it Martin Luther King. And this post comes up on my social media once a year where I was pretty livid about the fact that this street was only renamed for twenty-eight days. I thought it was the stupidest thing ever. Fast forward some years. I was enlightened on why that actually happened. And that was because that was the compromise that the late Carol Breeding could get the city to agree to at the time. Once I became president of the N double A C P, I had the pleasure of working hand-in-hand with our former mayor, uh, Mr. Derek Dobie's, to make some changes that allowed a pathway for the street to be permanently renamed. One of the most important things that I remember talking to Mayor Dobie's about was, if we do this, this cannot be just the run-of-the-mill, regular, worn-down, rundown, drug-infested, crime-infested Martin Luther Kings that you see across the nation. Like, this has to mean something. This has to be more than just a name change. And I just want to say how honored I am to be on the other side of the work at this point to actually follow through on the promise that was made by our former mayor and just shout him out right now. Because I'm helping him keep his word right now. Because that was one of the biggest things. That was like the biggest caveat for me to even push for that, is that this isn't just a street rename. And he was like, oh, no, we got, we got major plans to make sure. Um, and we, I remember we walked from Dollar General, me, him, and, uh, Pat Birch walked from Dollar General all the way down to Morrell Street and really talked about and reimagined what changes could be made physically to the street. And I think that's what this grant is about. Like, that's, that's the part that makes me the most excited is being on the other side of, like, fulfilling that promise of this is more than just about a street name. This is like the, the, the push that we made, that the N double A C P made was called a street fit for a king. And I think that this is, this is the work that has to be done to make Martin Luther King Drive what it should be in Jackson. And I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm like truly honored to be at the table to, to work to make that happen and make that, make that come to reality. Okay. The clerk will tally and display the vote. All right, that concludes the business of the day. We are down to council member comments. And, um, sorry, motion unanimously passes, uh, item number twelve, that brings us to council member comments. And, uh, let's start with, uh, council member Angelita Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your comments. And, you know, we had a ward meeting last week. Council member Nancy and I, Ward Two and Ward Three, and, um, you know, I hear that stuff too, you know, what's, we need this and we need that. And so, um, and I listened to people and I, and I told them, yep, we do. All, all of our communities need. And so, um, and we can't get it all done at once. And so for me, this is concentrating focus on an area that's been much neglected. And with the intention of this grant, there's no other place where this could happen. And, um, that I just assure my, my constituents that we, we too, um, can work on things in small steps. And so, um, that's the only comment that I would want to say in, in response to this, uh, discussion this evening. And, um, that we had a, I think, a very good turnout and a good meeting. And, um, some of our, uh, neighbors who have been living in their homes for many, many years showed up. And I think they felt, um, heard and they appreciated, uh, both G V I and J P D for being a part of that program. So I thank them too for being there and, um, presenting. Thank you.
Eastside?
Eastside! So, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, sir. Um, yeah, echo what, um, council lady, woman Gunn said. Um, the meeting was outstanding, you know, I think, um, Hit, Director Hit, G V I coordinator, uh, uh, yeah, sure, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank her for being there, you know, that had, the meeting was outstanding. So I had a lot of good questions, a lot of feedback, so, uh, I appreciate that. Um, you know, going back to, to me, and also I think it's so much of what the council member does in the ward, what they're trying to do in the ward. You know, I, I drive down south, on south side, I look, you know, I yell a lot about the, uh, I don't yell, but I say, it sure would be nice if we could have a nice trail.
but I say, it sure would be nice if we could have a nice trail like that somewhere on the east side of town. You know, I keep going back and forth, but a lot of different things. But it, it takes a while. But I think you keep on talking about it, you keep staying in their ear hole, and they know who they are. Eventually, things will move forward. It takes, it just takes a while. But continue to fight, continue to fight, and move forward. I'm not jealous of any, any ward that gets work done, because we all need work. I know, I think in twenty-four or twenty-five, they're going to redo East Michigan Ave. Same thing they did to West Michigan Ave. They're going to tear everything up and do that. So, you know, that's a great thing. You know, we have a, a young man we call Wally Nico. And, and he's an outstanding person, but he owns almost everything on East Michigan Ave and other places. So, you know, we still working with him. I think eventually, he's going to start to sell some things at reasonable prices. And that's going to work out fine. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? You know what I mean? Also, I'd just like to say, that's a meeting coordinating with the county, and we're going to, it's going to be for veterans. We can be talking about the PAC Act and what the PAC Act, what's available for veterans. You know, dealing with like burn pits and things like that. They passed the, the PAC Act. And there's money available, there's a lot of things available for veterans. So working with county, trying to coordinate some things, looking like sometime next month, we spoke with a person from Ann Arbor will come down, and they're going to just do a whole presentation. We're going to have some, you know, tables set up so, to maybe to help veterans that they need help or their families. So look for more to come on that date. When it happens, hopefully, you know, we can get it sent out throughout the city and just have a lot of information on it. But it, it's, it's very important. You can Google PAC Act if you don't know what PAC Act is. And it, it's very important, it's very important, very important legislative that passed. And I thank the president for signing it. It's just, it's great, it's great. If you're a veteran, you know, been in Gulf War, seen a lot of things, there's just some great things that can come, come along, not only just Gulf War, but Vietnam, Korean War. So it's a lot of things that's available, that's coming out. And I've just been trying for a while, so it looks like we're going to be able to have a meeting coming up. So once I find out when that date is, I'll make sure I pass it on. And it's good to see you, Derek. And so when I saw Derek walk in, I didn't think that was a good sign. I'm talking about, I'm talking about school board. I didn't think that was a good sign. Because I knew it looked, smelled kind of fishy being on the agenda without the school board voting on it. I'm just talking smack, that's all. He knew what I'm talking about. Thank you very much. Good night and good day.
Thanks, Mayor.
That's been a long time coming, huh? He doesn't usually say too much. I just want to announce that Ward One will be holding a neighborhood meeting a week from today, February twenty-eighth, at the MLK Center, starting at six. We, myself, as the ward council member, Diane Washington, with the Y-Pop group, will be addressing the Neighborhood Watch, piece four, Ward One. We have one group that's kind of active in the Robinson Street area, but we'd like to get more groups, get in our neighbors, more engaged, more involved with what's going on. Of course, we've had some unfortunate incidents that occurred northeast side of town. However, I feel that Dan, Diane, and I want to try to get some groups in motion for Ward One. We're going to have our own John Willis speak about the DEI, being the director of that department. And we have a special guest from Michigan State Extensions Group, Dr. Tyler, well, Dr. Quentin Tyler, I believe, is his name. He's just going to come and see what we're doing and what we're working on in, in the ward portion of this. So next Tuesday at six o'clock at Martin Luther King Center. Come out, get involved. We want our neighbors to get more engaged with each other. Thank you.
Councilmember Schlecki.
All right. So I would like to have the mayor look at the Elections Commission, because as far as I know, there's someone who's not attending. And that's such an important commission that it should be completely attended by everybody who's on it. So if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, I'd appreciate it.
Is there a certain individual you want to tell me?
I don't know the names. I, I know there, I, I think if you, Andrea, Andrea would, would know, because she's on that. So she can share. There's two appointed from the public, general public. And one does not attend, and one does. And I think it should be, you should have people on commissions that, we should have people on commissions that attend. It's, they're, they're all important, and lack of attendance makes a huge difference, so. I'd like to ask Jonathan for an update on the training that you're doing with extreme ownership. How's that going? How are people, who, who's taken it? How much have we spent? Kind of, can you update us on that, extreme owner? Because I just started reading the book.
Yeah, I can give you an update offline. I don't have anything at my fingertips right now.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe at the next council meeting or something. Okay. Can we have the clerks, probably goes without asking, but can we have a clerk's presentation added to the agenda packet? And on my ward meeting, we focused on that road project on Lansing Avenue. And so the roads, it was very interesting. I like the dialogue. And I think people really do like these meetings that we have. I don't, I heard you guys had a lot of people show up. And I know at the last one I went to, that Arlene did, it was jam-packed. And we had probably thirty people at mine. So I think they're really important to do. I would like to see a map of the projects that have been done in the last ten years so that we can all have a visual of what's, what's going on. It's easy to forget that this road was done here, or that road's been done there. Or maybe, it seems to me that Wisner was done and they're redoing it again, you know? And so those are, you know, the question bags, why would that happen, right? I could be wrong on that, so. And I, and I do think that it would be important, even though it's a big ask, if we, if my constituent on Commonwealth had some idea when their road was scheduled to be done, even if it's twenty years from now, then Commonwealth people could actually get together and petition to have a mill down and a, you know, overlay. And our constituents could be a little more proactive. But having some idea when their roads are going to be done, and it's a rolling, it's going to probably roll every year changed, I think that would help alleviate some people's concerns. So staying on that same topic, it dawned on me that our taxable value is, unfortunately, is going to increase five percent, which means your tax bills, your property tax bill is going to go up five percent. Maybe the mileage came down a little bit, I don't know. But let's just say it's five percent. Is there a chance in the budget, we could consider taking that five percent increase of the taxable value on the general operating revenue and the public improvement revenue? And applying that amount of money towards roads? And maybe making a policy on any properties, houses that have sold that additional taxable value? Find extra money to go towards roads. And I don't care if it's roads that are repaired in the third ward, or the first ward, or the sixth ward. Just, you know, we've got bad roads. So food for thought, if you would consider that, Jonathan, when you're doing your budgeting, since that's coming up soon. And then I've talked to Jonathan about this, but in light of the, hopefully, we do get the grant for the MLK in light of the fact that multimodal pathways get done faster if they're in a plan. And with the MDOT doing East Michigan Avenue, I think it's now four years from now that they're going to do it. It has to be in a plan, so we do have to get one update on our multimodal plan to make sure that the state or the federal government includes that in the cost and helps us pay for those multimodal. And I think multimodal, with our aging community, as society, the more pedestrian-friendly we make our community, the more attractive it is. And the more people we get out on the road, on feet, the safer it is, so. That's all I have. And thank you to John Dowling for coming and staying so late at my ward meeting. He did a great job. He's very patient, so.
Councilmember Bednau?
That was actually, I'm kind of glad you brought that up. That was an excellent segue into what I was going to ask. I, I know that in the city, it's a lot of our sidewalks, especially in the fourth and fifth ward, which are where I usually go, are pretty atrocious in a lot of places, like where there's sidewalk missing in large chunks. And they're frankly not safe. I know people that, like, walk their kids in strollers on those sidewalks and literally have to, like, veer around or go across the street and use the sidewalk across the street because they're so bad. So if there's a way that we can take a look at our sidewalks in the city, I'd appreciate it. I know I've brought it up before, but I just want to make sure that I don't forget.
Get going on that road list.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be a little messy. But, yeah, that's my, that's my only thing. Thank you.
Councilmember Will?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
I'm going to withhold my comments for tonight.
What? You, are you?
I am. I got no comment.
Thank you, Jesus.
Ditto.
Okay.
No comment.
No comment?
No comment from me or the city manager.
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved, and.
Go. Support.
And support it. All in favor, say aye.
West side. West side. Go west side. Northwest side.